Yeah, memorization is one way. One way, there are multiple paths, but that's one.
Oh, there she comes.
Did you think I'd be late?
No.
Of course not.
Oh, you're not going to.
Oh, you did, good.
And so we take her out there and show her the paths on the path.
Have you gone into the museum?
Yes.
What do you think of that?
She loves the water park, like the water, like the big water.
Oh.
You're talking about the zoo?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She loves like the big water.
Yeah.
Second habitat. The lion roar, did you, if you go early in the morning, let's go to the lion's, you should hear the roar.
We did, because the last time we went, the lions were out.
Yeah, that's great, that's a good experience.
Deborah, that's for me. I got it.
Okay.
I remember, thank you.
No, thank you.
Not a problem. Anne might actually turn that one down.
You know, I'm not sure.
I think the last two years was a little bit as true. The other one is why I'm fishing.
Okay. I don't think he's, he's not any. I've never seen him out there for graduation exercises. Maybe Slana, I don't think he's at Slana West. But definitely you know them.
Deborah, Deborah, this is the updated one without the. Yes, it is, I took it off, on your screen in here.
I was over at Q-Rex all picking up some medicine and.
How are you?
And the little girl that waited on me said, oh, how are you, Mrs. X-line, how are you? And so I, I said, I'm fine, how are you, I just went on and we had a nice little chat. So I was gonna share that with the, there's a woman here in town, a lot of people get us mixed up, so then she and I see each other, then we share. Oh, I saw so and so, and I saw so and so. Oh, you were a great teacher, she loved having you as a teacher, and the woman said, oh, yeah, I loved having her too, you know, we just, rather than disappoint them, you know. Oh, there's me, and I gotta go tell her.
Probably will. Box one out of how many? B. Twelve B personnel, and then under item five G, your incumbents need to remove the.
Do you bring around fries?
Um, I'm gonna need all of that, y'all are on your own. It's been a rough weekend, it's only Tuesday. Not sleep last night.
Do you have a routine?
Oh, yeah.
Go into it when you can't sleep.
I try, but bad dreams or something.
I don't, yeah, restless for some reason.
No, right, keep waking up.
And then you get mad because you wake up and you don't know why.
What?
I guess that's more than. Or, no. Before it causes a racket during the meeting.
Like it.
Just trying to see if I did anything to make.
I really look dead?
I would like to call the U S T three oh five Board of Education meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, do we have any additions or corrections to our agenda?
Uh, yes, Madam President, under item five G, under incumbences, I need to, uh, remove the incumbents for Scott Rice Office Works, the purchase of furniture, we'll bring that back to the board at a later time. And then also, I would like to, uh, request that the board remove item twelve B, uh, for executive session from personnel, we no longer need that.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as corrected?
Aye, so move.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, all those opposed, same sign, motion passes six zero. Moving on to the, um, our recognitions and presentations with Len X-line.
You have, uh, I believe this presentation on your desktop, if you wanna go ahead and pull that up.
Good evening, excuse me, I am here tonight to talk to you about our I Decide curriculum. You will recall that, um, this has been in place for two years now, and so we wanted to give you another update, I came last summer and talked to you a little bit about how year one went, and I would like to add to that data today. I do want to do a couple of introductions, because this is a curriculum that we deliver in combination with staff from the Pregnancy Service Center, and so we have with us today Francesca Bailey, um, Duane Custer, Tina Price, and Tobin Sawyers. And at the end, they will, um, join me in case you might have any questions that they're better able to answer. I want to start by just talking about participation in the program. For this particular program, we do do an opt-in, and, uh, we send home permission slips with all of our kids, and then any student that brings back the permission slip can participate in the curriculum. At South Middle School this year, we did have four students that opted out, last year we had five at South Middle, and at Lakewood we had twenty-two students opt out, and last year we had forty-two, just so that you have some comparative data. When we have a student opt out, our principals or the teachers do try to make contact with the parent to just make sure that, uh, maybe the permission slip didn't get lost en route home, um, and to make sure that parents do have indeed the option for their child to participate if they so choose to do. The first series of questions that I'm going to share with you are, um, just related to the conversation that we try to open between parent and student, or guardian and student, about, um, sex education and good decision-making, and you can see that these, this is from the students that took the particular class this year. The seventh grade students, um, you can see that there's a significant increase in kids reporting that, yes, they have indeed had a conversation with a parent, and at the eighth grade, you can see there is an increase as well. The second question is, um, try, we're trying to get kids to where they will talk to a trusted adult when they have questions about really serious issues. And so as part of this curriculum, each night, there is a quick little homework assignment, that it, kids come home and engage in a conversation with their parents. I was unfortunate to have two kids actually go through this as seventh graders this, this year, and two very different experiences, having those conversations with, um, my son versus my daughter. But, um, we certainly had some good conversations, and it was interesting, the information that they received. But what we ask is, if you had a question about sex, who would you go to first? And what you can see is, we're looking for, um, responses to increase in the greens and in that gold area, to where we're getting our information from adults that we trust. Another part of the curriculum is just informational, and so this is a sample of a question that is related to just the content that is taught, and the idea that, uh, we want kids to have correct information. So, we asked students, did they think that it was true or false, or they weren't sure, that people can have and spread a sexually transmitted infection without even knowing it? And you can see that at seventh grade, a marked, um, improvement in the number of kids that understand that that is indeed the case. The one thing that we weren't able to do last year, that I am able to do this year, is to give you a little bit of a longitudinal comparison. What I did was, I pulled those same three questions, and this, um, this chart shows you the current eighth graders, the kids that just finished eighth grade, how they reported in, at the beginning of seventh grade, um, through the end of eighth grade, on these responses. So, when you look at, have you, your parent, guardian ever talked about sex, you can see that we went from fifty-four percent engaging in that conversation with a parent, um, at the beginning of seventh grade, up to eighty-one percent, same group of kids. And so some improvement there in making sure that parents and, um, students and guardians and students, trusted adults and students are having those conversations, and kids are getting correct information. The second question was, if you had that, uh, a question about sex, who would you go to first? And, um, what you see there is, we didn't get much improvement, which I think shows the importance of us going to kids as adults and, and engaging in the conversation and starting the conversation from the adult end. And then finally, people can have and spread the sexually transmitted infection without knowing it, you can, you see that, again, um, same group of kids now that you're looking at, from seventy-five percent when they started the curriculum to ninety-four percent, um, at the end of the curriculum. The next series of questions is about internet safety, and what we know is, kids are bombarded with the ability to get out digital content and to consume digital content, and we want them making good decisions. And so, the question, the prompt that we post here is, you don't have total control over what happens to what you put on the internet, and you can see that, um, we did have improvement in students knowing that they really, once it's out there, it's, it's out there for all to see and use however they want. And then we ask them, how important is it to not post private information, and you see that, um, we went from seventy-eight to eighty-seven percent at seventh grade, and seventy-seven to eighty-two percent at eighth grade. Um, at seventh grade, we have ninety-seven percent of our kids that understand, yes, it's important to keep private information private, and at eighth grade, we have ninety-four percent of our students that were reporting that, um, it's important to not post private information. Again, I'm giving you the longitudinal comparison, this now is the same group of students, and, um, the idea of you can't control what you put on the internet, when the current eighth graders started, about fifty-five percent of them understood that, at the end of instruction, seventy-eight percent understood that. And then, how important is it to not post private information, an increase of seventy-seven to ninety-four percent there. The next set of questions is about, uh, just decision-making, and, um, we, this curriculum does talk about, um, drugs, it talks about alcohol, it talks about, um, about sex as well, but it is, this part really is about making good decisions and understanding the impact, long-term impact of your decisions. And so you can see that we had a five percent increase in students who understand that avoiding drugs will give them a better chance of reaching their personal goals, um, and at the eighth grade level, five percent too. One of the conversations in homework is, um, you know, what goals and dreams do you have for me, mom, dad, guardian, trusted adult, that's one of the conversations that happens at home. And so, um, it, it's really good, I think, for us to be engaging in that conversation with our young people. This is, that avoiding a teen pregnancy will help us achieve a better, um, have a better chance of achieving our goals, and again, you can see an increase in the, um, students that are reporting that, yes, they would agree with that statement. And then alcohol is the third, okay, and there, um, a five percent and a four percent increase. The final longitudinal comparison, that was the last set of questions that we asked, both in seventh grade and in eighth grade, um, and you, on this, what you will really notice is, not a lot of improvement between seventh and eighth grade, which I think, um, just reiterate, that, that would tell me, we need to continue to have these conversations with our students. Um, you do see a dip at the beginning of eighth grade, a slight dip there, um, that rebounds when the conversation happens again, and so it's important for us to be, um, talking to our students about issues like this. The next set of questions is, was asked only of eighth graders, just because the content between the seventh grade lessons and the eighth grade lessons differ, and so, um, the question was, I know how my parent or guardian feels about me having a sexual relationship as a teen, and you can see that, um, we did have a six percent increase in students reporting that, yes, they, they know what, uh, what their parent and guardian would feel there.
Is, now, excuse me, um, it says responses from spring, I haven't been noticing, are these all from spring, was it only in the spring semester?
This was fall to spring.
Okay.
Fall to spring. Okay, so the right-hand column was from spring two thousand sixteen. Okay?
Okay.
My label is poor. Okay, and then, um, the last question is, how likely are you to wait until you're in a committed relationship to have sex? And at the, um, at the beginning of the year, you can see that, um, forty-eight percent very likely, twenty-eight percent likely, and at the end, we had, um, fifty-five percent and twenty-eight percent. The other piece that I pulled in this year, that we did not do last year, was we did survey staff, and, um, felt that it was important to get some feelings from staff about how they felt about the curriculum, and you can see, um, that, uh, what I asked them was, what portion of the particular, of the curriculum delivery did they observe? And so, um, there were five, just so that you know the sample size here, what I did was, I, um, I sent out a Survey Monkey survey to anybody that would have maybe been in the classroom doing observations, so your principals, your assistant principals, um, coaches, and then also to any of the teachers that would have been involved in the delivery, okay? So five, five of the people responding were the blue, all sessions, one person saw most sessions, but not all, three people saw a few, and two people only saw partial sessions, just so that you have an idea when I'm showing the, you this data, um, the, what stance it is that they were looking at the curriculum from. I asked about the overall impressions in that email, and here, I, here are just the statements that were actually written, and I included them all, so that you would have the same data that I did. I Decide's an excellent curriculum, they talk about the interactive methods and student involvement. The feeling that it really is curriculum that, that students need to know, and then a couple shout-outs to the Pregnancy Service Center staff here, um, staff are very professional with good current relevant information, and the presenters are excellent. Um, again, the classroom teacher is in the classroom when this is provided, but the Pregnancy Service Center, um, staff is the person that's actually doing the delivery, and, and the teacher is the support, just so that you know what that looks like. Um, this comment, continually impressed with the curriculum, and again, a shout-out, the manner in which it's delivered, again, that it's especially important for middle school students, although some of these topics are tough at the middle school age, um, our teachers really are feeling like it's information that our students need to know. Good curriculum, non-threatening way, and then I, good questions, um, and that age-appropriate answers, which I think is very important when we're talking about topics like this. And then I, I liked the idea of getting kids to think about potential choices and decisions, because that really is one of the, one of the underlying, um, purposes of this curriculum, to get kids to connect our decision-making with, with what's happening, um, in our lives long-term and how that's connected. A lot of times, middle school kids don't make that connection very well. And then, um, the lines of communication, and again, that is one of the, um, baseline things about this curriculum, that we really want that communication opened up. The next thing that I did ask was concerns, and again, I included all of them, so that you could see them, I only received two concerns. The first was that some of the information seems too in-depth for this age student, and the second was that some parts of the lessons were informal and silly, and that eighth graders took advantage of those times, and if you've worked with middle school kids, um, and we, if you've worked with middle school kids on a topic like this, um, these two comments didn't surprise me. The content is in alignment with what is expected in the standards, and, um, and it is important content for us to be discussing with our, with our students, uh, but I do, I, I can certainly see where sometimes it's uncomfortable, and a lot of times, that response is to giggle and laugh, and so. The last thing that I asked them was strengths of the curriculum, and I asked, what lessons, if any, are especially strong, and nearly every lesson was, had something that was listed, I thought was interesting. And then the last comment, I think, you know, I feel that all of the lessons are very strong, so I wanted to share with you, um, the kinds of things that our teachers and our staff are saying really, really are strong. With that, I would like to invite, um, you up, if there are any questions that we can answer for you.
All right, I'll go. Um, why is, when you, on this list of what lessons, if any, are especially strong, what does it mean by wedding?
There is, uh, seventh grade, day five, where we, um, want to present the idea of, uh, abstinence and what it means to be abstinent, and, um, it's hard to compare that, um, without having, uh, some, some kind of a, a, an analogy, and so what we do is, we, we, um, do a wedding simulation, which is where we have two individuals come up to the front, and we go through the symbolism of what it means to be married, like where did some of this weird stuff come from? Um, and at the end, or you know, we're defining, we're defining, um, that, what abstinence is to them in the wedding lesson, and at the end, is this really cool part, where we show them, um, you know, if these two people didn't have any other sexual partners but themselves, and then they came together, and we compare that with, you know, if before they came together in this marriage union, they had, you know, all these other experiences, what does it look like to, you know, comparing the two? And, uh, we kinda bring out a sexual exposure chart that just informs them, hey, by the way, you know, exponentially, if you didn't realize, you know, when you're with more people, um, it definitely has a more of a negative effect on you in more ways than one, and we kinda draw, help them draw some of those conclusions, and just give them a what-if this, and what-if this, to kinda be able to make those healthy decisions that they need to make.
I'll just mention, I read that part last year, and, uh, the explanations for, for instance, why the best man stands next to the, next to the groom, because he has to defend the, uh, groom if the wife's family comes to get him, because he's probably stolen the wife, the bride, from her home. It seemed unlikely that that is really why we have our, our best man stand next to the, uh, groom. Some of those seemed a little far-fetched, now, I don't know where you got them and, um, how they got in there, but, uh, that made me really quite uncomfortable, that one, and I can see that it's very, uh, well, putting the blanket on the floor as the marriage bed, inviting everyone in that you've ever had relations with, it's very, uh, participatory. Uh, I didn't feel like it was necessarily, um, valuable, but apparently, one of the teachers at least thought it was, so, uh, I'm glad that they liked it, uh, I hope it's true that they're having good discussions in this curriculum.
Kinda to bounce off of that, is that the only thing, are we abstinence only, is that all we're teaching?
No, ma'am, um, abstinence only is not, uh, the basis of this curriculum, what this curriculum is, is it's, it's called a sexual risk avoidance approach, which is where we are telling them the consequences of their actions, and we are a lot, we are not just reducing the risk, but we're saying, this is the way to avoid it. So yes, there's abstinence, yes, there's this contraceptive, this is how all this works, you gotta pick one, you gotta, you know, so that's, that's the, the angle that we come at that with, and it's the fastest actually growing, um, way to provide all this information to young people in, in the United States at this point.
I would also tell you that at ninth grade, we have a very strong health curriculum that does, it, that also, um, builds on this, and does include, um, strong information about pregnancy prevention, um, sexually transmitted infections. So this is probably a little bit, um, more abstinence-based than as kids get older, not that we're, you know, we, we remain abstinence-based, but it really is, um, more information about how you can, um, how you can, what options are available, and how you can make good decisions as kids are getting older, so.
The only, I guess the only reason I brought it up, kinda bouncing off, and again, I guess I'm the one that brought it up, but when I first heard of it, it sounded more like you were shaming, shaming people for doing that, and I just hoped that that's not the case.
Not, not in any case at all, and I'm glad you brought that up, because that's a, a very specific concern, we don't, we don't wanna shame anybody, of course, we, we wanna, wanna get to their heart and let them know that we care about them, and with all these choices that they can make, they can have a better future and a better life, and so we're very careful about how we word things, and about, um, how we don't put, um, I don't know, I don't know how to explain it, but we don't, you know, if there's a statistic even, I'm not saying, um, you know, when I, when I provide within the statistic, I say, you know, you might, these might be some facts of your life, but you don't have to be this statistic, um, and I know a lot of that, I'm just real sensitive to that myself, so, um, that's something we're really careful of in the class, for sure.
Oh, come on, you guys have questions, Carol?
Why do you think we have the five to ten percent holdouts? The recalcitrants?
I, from, from my conversation with the two principals, what I'm hearing is, there are, um, there are some parents that really do want to handle this completely at home, and that a lot of times, when they've contacted parents and had that conversation, that that's been, um, you know, what they've said, and we certainly wanna respect that.
Not parents, kids. Kids that go through the program and, and are gonna say, no, avoiding alcohol will give me a better chance at achieving, like, you know, we got five to ten percent on every one of these, why are they digging in their heels?
I think part of that is the age, and that, kids just tend to respond that way, I do think that over time, hearing the message over and over, um, is important for those students, even if they are responding no. But I can't speculate as to, you know, anything specific about the kids, because the survey is anonymous.
Right.
As it should be.
Do, do we get, get that kind of attitude in class? That dig in the heels?
Well, it depends on what it is, I mean, you can tell.
Okay.
Where the kid's background comes from plays into your participation, and.
Right.
So, so in the gamut of a classroom, with boys and girls, and all different walks of life, um, it's fun, because you get to bounce those ideas, and you can see the ones with all kinds of different ideas, and we accept their questions, and we talk through them, and it's really, that's really a fun part of the, you know, such a diverse, even the armory ones, maybe that, uh, choose to say, what, you know, what about this question, or all those things.
Okay.
Anyone else? Comments, questions, Carol, anyone else? All right, thank you, appreciate it. All right, moving on to the approval of our consent agenda items, which include our minutes of our June fourteenth, twenty sixteen, regular meeting, our personnel reports, our financial reports, which include our end-of-year bills list through June twenty-second, and our end-of-year bond bills through June twenty-second, our treasures report, our investment report, and our journal entries. We're approving incumbents listings to C D W G in the amount of forty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars for the purchase of a document cameras for elementary schools, to C D W G in the amount of a hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred dollars for the purchase of additional Chromebooks for use, um, in our elementary bookkeeping, or I'm sorry, keyboarding, um, to Kansas Gas Service, and the amount of fifty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars for the replacement of a gas service line at Central High. We're approving our sound system bid to Sound Innovations for base bids and alternates number one for Central and South High, in the amount of a hundred and three thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars, and we're approving Smokie Hill Education Service Center contract to provide educational services for students located at Saint Francis Academy for the sixteen seventeen school year. We're approving our Heartland Childcare partnership contracts, and we're approving license agreements for Houstoner bus lanes. Can I get a motion to approve these consent agenda items as presented?
Aye, so move.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, um, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, all those opposed, same sign, so move, seven zero, moving on to our public forum, if anybody would like to address the board, now would be your time. Seeing no one rushing up, we're gonna move on to our action agenda, starting with our technology instructional and maintenance and improvement plans with Ms. X-line and Mr. Christie.
No, Mr. Christie, Ms. X-line. Mr. Christie's not available, but Ms. X-line absolutely would be willing to answer any questions that the board might have, this was, uh, presented to the board at the last board meeting as a discussion item, so hopefully, in the last several weeks, you've had an opportunity to review the information.
I did want to just address one question that was asked last time, so that you would have, um, information, and then see if there were any other questions that I could, um, try to clarify. I was asked last time about teacher involvement in the plan, and I did want to tell you that there are several things that are in the plan to try to address teacher involvement. One thing is that you'll see there, in multiple places, there are, there's a mention. One thing is that you'll see there, in multiple places, there are, there's a mention of a needs assessment that we really need to get in place, a better way to get information from teachers as far as what they need regarding technology and technology support. And so in several of the plans, you'll see that needs assessment piece. The other thing is that we, there were several recommendations that came directly from what staff was telling us. At the secondary level, there was concern that we no longer had a monitoring tool in place where teachers could see student screens around the room. And so worked in the plan is what's called Go Guardian. And that is a way that teachers are able to see everybody's screens on their own screen and all the tabs that are open. It's an improvement over what we had in the past and very easy to use. And then at the elementary level, the additional Chromebooks was to address a need that the elementary teachers were telling us and also to address a need that the library media specialists were saying that they needed access to technology to be able to deliver their curriculum. And then finally, the bandwidth issue is something that we hear about and so Mr. Christie is working to address that. So we, I did want to just point out that they, that there is information that is flowing to us through multiple avenues and in the plan, a concerted effort to do a better job of communicating because that's an area where we really felt like that we needed to improve. So are, if there are any other questions that I can answer, I certainly would be happy to do so now.
Anne?
I just, first I'll say that this is quite a document and I'm impressed at all the work that went into it. Just a tiny little thing, there's stylistically, there's some issues like on the board approved policies, all but one of them are questions and they have an answer. And the first one is not a question, but it has an answer anyway, so it seems like if it were worded in a way that they all are the same kind of sentence, it would flow better. That doesn't say anything about the content, the content was impressive.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Wouldn't anybody like to make a motion to approve this? Nendra?
I move that we approve the technology plan and the technology maintenance and improvement plan for 2016 through 2019 as presented this evening, June four, or as presented last board meeting, June 14th, 2016 meeting.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on in our action agenda to our support staff handbook changes.
Good evening. At the last board meeting, I brought to you some changes that we're requesting to the support staff handbook. This came from the Committee of Classified Staff and Administration. The changes are very minimal. One is to add the new language about the confidentiality of student information and then the modification of current language, changing the number of days it can be carried over from 15 to 20. Any questions? If not, I ask that, I recommend that you approve these changes for the 2016, 2017 support staff handbook.
Marian?
I move that we approve the changes to the 2016, 2017 support staff handbook as presented.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second by Anne. Any discussion before we vote on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So passes seven zero. Thank you. Moving on to our 1617 school site councils with Mr. Hall.
Yes, Madam President, policy, board policy, IB, as well as state statute, requires that local boards of education appoint school site councils, the membership, as well as the dates of those meetings. What you have in your packet before you are the suggested members that each of the building administrators were asked to compile, as well as the meeting dates for their site councils for the upcoming school year. So I would ask that the board recommend the school site council memberships and meeting dates as presented.
All right. Anyone like to make a motion to do that? Anne?
I move that we approve the 2016, 2017 school site councils' memberships and meeting dates as presented.
Awesome. Okay, I have a motion. Anyone like to second that?
Second.
And I have a second by Nendra. Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right.
Wait, we had some.
I'm so sorry. You gotta jump in there.
I had a question.
I have to.
Amanda McCallas is on two different councils.
Correct.
And that's.
And that's fine. I mean, they can serve on multiple councils. And she, one maybe as a parent and the other one maybe as a community member.
Yeah.
Because I know she's on Schilling's.
Right. And then.
She's on Central as well.
And Central, and, and her daughter, I believe, is going to Central now. So I think she's, one is a parent and one's a community member, I believe.
Okay, and I was thinking they were both community, but that.
She's listed as community on both.
On both of the Centrals as well.
She's also the director of United Way, so.
Right, well, that makes a little bit sense. That, so I.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's fine to serve on multiple site councils, so.
I was curious why, do you have any idea? I mean, I guess these are recommendations of the principal, but Lakewood seemed really small compared, I guess Schilling too. Lakewood compared to.
Central, like, for example.
Yeah, well, yeah. And even South Middle is much bigger than Lakewood, so.
I'm sure it has a lot to do with who volunteers.
What's that?
I'm sure it has a lot to do with who volunteers.
Well, I think so. And then we also have different administrators going into those buildings now, so that might be part of it. I think some of those, and, and, you know, we have with our high schools, those are very large and Ms. Xline stepped out, but I know with some of those, they have, they purposely have a large site council to make sure that they have a pretty good representative contingent show up for the meetings. And so I know they do that. I know Central, last year, actually, is so large that they had two different meetings. I think they have a, they have like a noon meeting and a five o'clock meeting. And so it really, it really just depends on leadership at each of the buildings as to how large the site council is. And they can also, at their discretion, they can add members throughout the year as well, so.
Any, any more discussion before we vote?
I would like to thank all of the people who have agreed to serve on these site councils and doing the job that they're doing.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote now. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. That concludes our action agenda, moving on to our discussion agenda, which we don't have anything, and on to our school board committee reports. Anne, would you like to start us off?
I have no report.
That was quick.
That makes two.
Okay. Nendra, you have anything?
I did attend our first meeting negotiations on June 20th.
Okay, Carol?
Yes, CKCIE Board of Control met on June 15th. Couple things of note, it was reported that there were 11 graduates of the Project Search Program. We do that in conjunction with Salina Regional, as you know, and the goal is to try to give participants the skills that will enable them to find employment, perhaps in a medical setting. There will be openings for 14 students next year, including some adults. A second thing that was discussed briefly, the former Hagaman Building, which houses CKCIE and MIS, is getting a new office entryway and the work is being done by USD 305 Maintenance. They were making some progress when we were in. I had reported at one point that speech-language pathologists seem to be in slightly better shape, at least hiring of them, but that's disappeared. It's kind of gone down the tubes. They're being poached. That was the word used by other entities who are willing to pay bonuses, which we are not doing at the present time. I won't say that we're unable to do it, but it would require some different kinds of issues, including no doubt negotiations. And anyway, so we're going back to a system of distance learning to provide for student needs. And then finally, and I think very appropriately, the superintendents agreed to a 10% increase in the assessments for CKCIE next year, with a committee to be assigned next fall to look at budget cuts again. And so, but that was, that really was welcome because there'd been the talk of a 6% increase and they just decided to do 10% and it was kind of with a sigh of relief that that occurred, so, good news.
All right, Marian, do you have anything to report?
About this time.
All right, well, I guess we'll move on to our superintendent's report and I hear congratulations are in order. I heard through the grapevine that someone was promoted in Rotary.
Who would that be? I was, I was inducted as the new president of the Salina Rotary Club, effective July 1st. So I guess I'm not really there yet, but I am kind of, you know, we'll have another meeting till the 12th, so I look forward to that. I just have, I've had an opportunity to be a Rotarian now for, gosh, 15-plus years and, and in other communities as well. And it's a great group of folks and, and very, very giving to our community and to the world around us. And so I'm, I'm pleased that they were entrusted me enough to lead their organization, so I look forward to that.
Service above self.
Well, thank you. You, are you a Rotarian?
No, my dad was.
Well, there you go. Then you know that, all right. Do you know the four-way? No, I won't even.
How about the song?
The song, so we do see, Anne can do that over there.
I can't, but I was gonna say, it's the 100th year of Salina Rotary, so Bill's in charge for the 100th anniversary.
Yes, and they didn't tell me that when I agreed to do that two years ago, but they said, oh, by the way, that is our birthday. And I'm like, okay, we can do this, this will be fun. Looking forward to it. I, I tell you what, two weeks ago, we had our last Board of Education meeting and the mood at that point was very somber with respect to what was happening with the legislature, what was going to happen with the court. Were, were we in fact going to have school after July 1, after July 1, let alone in August? Well, needless to say, I mean, you've all been reading the papers, you know what's happened and our legislature basically came together and, and put together a, a school funding bill that I believe, and, and to the point that the, the plaintiffs agreed, we'll stipulate to that as well, will pass the Supreme Court's muster and compliance with the equity piece of the Gannon decision. So it was, it's 2016 substitute for House Bill 2001 is approximately $38 million. The revenues, it was interesting because it kind of ebbed and it flowed. There was a concern that there's gonna be a half, a half of 1% cut in everyone's general fund and reallocate those dollars and redistribute those dollars. That never materialized. Thankfully, I, I had several conversations with the representatives to not allow that to happen because I'd be really concerned that that would, would not have passed the Supreme Court's measure in terms of compliance. Thankfully, that went away. Essentially, the $38 million, we have about 2.8 million, they're gonna freeze funding for full-time virtual students for a year, about 4.1 million, the million dollars that we're gonna reallocate originally, they had set aside some dollars for pre-K pilot program. They're gonna take those dollars, apply those to school funding and they'll use the TANF money, the tax assistance for needy families to pay for the, the pre-K pilot program. And then they had the Children's Initiative Fund and the Bioscience Authority, about a little over 30 million, 30.6 million. The Bioscience Authority is property that they plan on selling. If, if it raises more than, than $13 million above what they believe it will, then all that'll come out of the Bioscience Authority. If not, they'll take the remainder out of that from the Extraordinary Needs Fund. And so they were able to do that without necessarily cutting districts or reducing revenue to districts. What is the impact for USD 305? Well, it increases, it will increase our state aid for capital outlay, $563,589. And that is direct assistance. That's, that's dollars in the bank that we can absolutely use to, to purchase whatever we need for the school system. The other piece of that is LOB state aid, and that's the part when, when they did the original proposal that the court declined, that the LOB piece was the, the part that we were getting reduced on. Thankfully now, they, they in fact will be increasing our LOB state aid by $624,305. It's important to know that that's not cash in the bank, that's property tax release, relief, because as those dollars go in, the effect of that is that it lowers our local mill levy. So it helps our local taxpayers. So from that standpoint, I believe the legislation will pass the Supreme Court's measure in terms of compliance, both sides, both the state and the plaintiffs, that stipulated to that in court. The governor, in fact, signed that legislation yesterday and I believe firmly that it will not impact the start of school for this year. So thankfully, we've dodged that bullet. However, what remains out there on the horizon is the adequacy conversation. And that's gonna be a, a very interesting conversation. They're estimating, they project it's probably gonna be sometime next spring. That particular settlement could be 10 times what the equity settlement was. And so it could be in the neighborhood of 350, 400 million dollars and at a time when the state is cash-strapped. And so it's gonna be a very interesting conversation as we kind of get into that portion of the, the Gannon conversation. But for the time being, we're moving forward as planned, so. Other items that are going on in our school system, we have bond projects, you don't have to drive around too far to see what's happening and, and, you know, we've got, we do have, now, I need to, and I have Mr. Upson here, in case there are questions, but I had some folks drive by Central and we're a bit concerned that they saw modular classrooms outside of our building, all right? But they're there temporarily, I might add, they're not permanent, but they are there because it's part of the phasing process. We have to have classrooms to put students in for each a year or two until such time that we're, we finish the project. So that's why those are there. But I tell you what, we have at either of our two high schools, upwards of 110 to 130 people onsite on any given day, working on those sites. And so they're, they're really working very, very hard. I, I do know that we have at Central, you can see the two-story science addition that that's really moving along like gangbusters. If you go on the south side, you can see the, the performing arts area. And the addition to the performing arts area, if you go down to south, my gosh, all that, that addition on the east wing, Magnolia, it just seems to be getting larger and larger and larger and, and, and we have our, our storm shelters pretty much in place. And so it's just, it's just exciting. There's just a lot of things happening. So now, we're in the middle of summer, Mr. Upson and I have already had those conversations, it's time to start gearing down just a bit and understand that we have students showing up here in a couple of weeks, in a few weeks. And so they'll start putting those plans in place to, to ensure that we can receive those students, continue with education as we move forward in, in August. Other, other projects that are about ready to finish, Cottonwood should be finished by August. We have Oakdale, that should be finished within the next 30 days or so. Heartland is already completed, they've already started, they have their, their temporary certificate of occupancy and so they're already, they've already moved into that. Schilling Elementary should be finished in August, July or August, and so we're, we're starting to see some projects complete on the short term and that's always exciting to, to see that. So other than that, do appreciate, Ms. Elbow mentioned that we had our first negotiations meeting, I think last week it was, and the next one is scheduled for July 13th at 5:00 PM. And then lastly, but certainly not least, is we have to say farewell to two of our executive team members. We have Mr. Stan Bond, who's sitting on the far left, and then we have Mr. Mike Knowlton, who's sitting third from the right. This is in fact their last Board of Education meeting, in official capacity, but not necessarily the last one that I'd expect to see them in attendance at. Is that right?
I'm sure they'll come back just now.
You're gonna come back and just visit and share? Is that, I'm not getting any responses from either one of you two guys. Absolutely, that's okay.
Remember, you can stream them on, on Access.
Yeah, we are on Access TV. That's, that's always a possibility, right? So I, I do wanna say best wishes to both Mike and Stan for not only just the years of service to Kansas education, the years of service to Salina USD 305. I firmly believe, firmly believe that our school system, our community are better because of both of these gentlemen. So thank you very much for your service for the many, many years to Kansas kids and Salina kids. All right? And with that, that's all I have, Madam President.
Could I ask a quick question about the modulars? Do we have to buy those?
Yes, we do, in fact. Chris, did you want to address that at all? We did, we do have to purchase those. And it's a good question, on the back end, I don't know, can we turn around and sell those or not?
They're not purchased, they're leased.
Leased.
Oh, good.
And we, and we lease them through our construction contract, so we don't have any ownership of them at all. The construction contractor owns them.
Very good.
So they will go away, guaranteed.
Selling them is not very profitable. I, I think we did that with a couple before and it's not very good, so.
Yeah, we, we elected to do this very deliberately. We were originally gonna do, I'll talk about it a little bit, we were originally gonna do, because I'm standing here. We were gonna outfit the, the new gym that we're building, we were gonna put temporary classrooms inside of there as swing space as we renovated. And we did the cost benefit analysis of the cost of doing that versus the cost of leasing